... the Monday, March 4th, regular council meeting of the 34th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Here.
Councilmember Platt Anson?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack?
Here.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Kadekko with support by Councilmember Stedman. Are there any changes, additions? Hearing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt Anson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack?
Yes.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Now, would you please stand for the invocation Reverend Brayley is with us.
This is a prayer written in India during the 1930s. We pray to the Eternal to grease your weather vane so that it will turn at the true wind of the Spirit and not remain caught by the rust of tradition in a position unrelated to truth. Amen.
Amen. And now I see some members of the Boy Scouts here with us. If they would come forward and please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do you get close to the mic?
Microphone.
So they can be taped. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the ruling of justice for all.
Thank you, and you're very welcome to this council meeting. I hope it will be a productive and valuable experience for you as you work your way through all of the levels in the Boy Scouts. And now we come to Citizens' Commons, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. My name's Joe Krug. I live at 1991 Phillips at the corner of Cambridge. And we've, myself and a couple of my neighbors, have come into a problem with the no parking that is being enforced now in the city parking lot there, to the point that we are now parking on sidewalks and parking on lawns. And this morning, I got a call from my wife that they made it into a tollway zone. And I tried to talk to administration today, but they were busy and I wasn't able to get anywhere with them. So I knew there was a meeting tonight. Everybody would be here and I'd be able to come here and see if I can get some help. Right now, I'm looking to possibly, if the administration would be directed, to remove those signs this evening, so we can get the cars off the lawns. I've tried to set up a meeting with both Derrick and Deputy Chief North, and have been unsuccessful to this point on doing that, so we can sit down and discuss it and come up with a solution. And so, so I'd just like to see if I could get some help with that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Zachary Schaefer, resident 16926 Berwood. I just want to take a few quick minutes to address the council and actually the public out here on an issue that's been pretty important and affects pretty much everybody in this room, let alone the entire United States and the world. And that issue is genetically modified foods. I am the executive director, or one of them, of a nonprofit organization called NoGMOforMichigan.org. And our job is simply to educate the public about what genetically modified foods are, the risks, and certainly how to avoid them. Genetically modified foods, unfortunately, we've been eating genetically modified foods for about 20 years, and there is no long-term study on human health risk, even though they've done some studies on animals, and when they did, they found it pretty detrimental. Genetic modified foods are not labeled, and our job is to simply, as a nonprofit organization, as one of the directors in charge of Metro Detroit, is to simply educate the public about what genetically modified foods, and again, the risks. I just had a meeting this past Saturday in Royal Oak for all the Detroit members to welcome the new members, to sign up new members at this organization. Again, it's called NoGMO, the number four, NoGMOforMichigan.org, and I have a few flyers here, as well as my business card. This is all a nonprofit organization, and I'm volunteering my time, as well as my services and even my money, little monies, to get this organization going. We have about 700 members right now. We're projecting to hopefully be in the thousands within, you know, six months to a year. And once we get enough support, we can certainly go into a 501(c)(4), into a political agenda, and then possibly talk to some of the people in this legislation. And basically, I'm here to ask the city council, please look into this matter. If you have connections into the higher office, into the Senate, into the legislation, I've certainly wrote to Mr. Snyder and Mrs. Stabinow and Mr. Levin regarding this. In fact, I ran into Mr. Levin and Royal Oak City Council. I've been speaking at city councils all over in this area, trying to educate the public about this organization. And with your permission, if I could just leave my flyers and my business card on the corner of the desk right there, if people come on and they contact me, learn more about genetically modified foods, I'll be certainly happy to do so. And I'll close with this. Genetically modified foods, folks, this is when they take the DNA from a specific species, like a bacteria, virus, or even an animal, and they splice it into another species, in this case, corn, soy, sugarbeets. And when they do this to, for instance, the corn, as the corn grows, because it has the DNA bacteria, the corn is actually a pesticide. And the FDA, the Food and Drug Administration, they don't have to label that corn as genetically modified, but the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, has to actually certify that corn and regulate it as a pesticide, because when a bug dies, it ruptures the stomach because of that toxic bacteria that's been spliced into it. So there's a lot of things going on with our food system, and again, this is all unlabeled. And my job, and I'm working very, very hard at it, is to just simply get people aware so they know what genetically modified foods are. Hopefully, eventually, we can see at the point where you'll see it on the shelves, where if it's on the shelves, it'll be labeled, and we can certainly make a decision for ourselves. So in closing, thank you so much. I'll just set these right on the corner, if that's okay with your permission. Anybody that wants to find out some more information, I am one of the executive directors for all of Metro Detroit. It's a big, big area that I'm covering, but I'm hoping to get some support. And city council, City of Berkeley is great. My daughter goes to Andrew Elementary Road up the road, so this is an amazing community in terms of family unity, and I've, you know, I've traveled all over the place, and Berkeley is probably one of the tightest and most cohesive family community that I've seen around. So thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions. But other than that, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Commissioner?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Administration. My name is Dave Woodward. I reside at 1718 West Farnham in Royal Oak. And though I don't, I'm not a resident of Berkeley, I'm no stranger to Berkeley, having grown up just north of a block and a half, and I live literally one block away today. I have the great honor of representing Berkeley on the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. And again, I'm no stranger to Berkeley and many of you, but first time in a formal capacity of representing this great community, and look forward to working with you over the coming years to address a lot of the common issues that, I mean, that we'll be facing and a way to make our community stronger and fight for our similar priorities. I'm here today, and as I, I mean, based on the, I guess, the interest, as well as the value of bringing some information from the county on a pretty regular basis, outside of this, I will, I mean, send electronic communication to everyone, so that the communication goes back and forth in any way that I can be helpful to assisting you doing your job. Please don't hesitate to call as well for all the residents in the community. Three things I just want to, I mean, before you get into your meeting, to bring attention to, there is, actually, just last week, announced, our new county clerk, Lisa Brown, announced the contest for young high school artists to step forward and enter a contest to illustrate the cover of the Oakland County Directory, which I hope that most of you already have. If you don't have it, I'll make sure, well, this might be my last copy of the 2012 edition, but for the 2013 edition, we're going to hopefully have, we will have a winner, a contest of high school students around the entire county to enter and be selected. This directory only has all your contact information, but all 61 communities, contact information, government agencies, et cetera, shared with, I mean, new businesses that come into town, other leading agencies, really a great opportunity to highlight the talent that, I mean, our community, and I definitely hope that we get a lot of entries from the Berkeley area. The deadline for that is March 27th by 4:00 p.m. There's also a $50 gift card, but the notoriety of your exposure should be enough to motivate some young people to participate. And it's open to public students, high school students at public schools, private schools, and at home-based learning. The, another program which you might have heard about that I think is really important, especially as we continue to kind of crawl ourselves back out of the economic, the Great Recession, and home values starting to stabilize, there's still a lot of our neighbors that are struggling just to make ends meet. There is an incredible program that's available, recently because of a modification of a waiver granted by the U.S. Department of Treasury, to make monies available to help residents who are under serious hardship to meet their property tax obligations. And so there's monies available through the Step Forward Michigan Loan Resource Program to help those with delinquent taxes, to get up to speed, and with the goal of preventing foreclosure, particularly tax foreclosure, and preventing the house getting on the auction block. We all know that preventing foreclosure helps save all of our property values and making sure that those back taxes get paid, so that we can afford the public safety, the funding for schools, other core, critical city and county services. And so, recommend that folks go through a housing counselor. Our county treasurer, Andy Meisner, recommends that people contact his Oakland County, Deputy Treasurer Lauren Bloom at 248-858-0624, to get connected with a certified housing counselor, either through Oakland County or through the numerous partner organizations that are really out there to help. This is one of, it's a delicate issue. People often like to just throw the notices away and try to ignore it. It's absolutely essential, as soon as there's a problem, there is help in many cases. And so, in this, in this program, which is, I mean, was unveiled not too long ago, a modification of monies coming into Michigan available to help address that can definitely help as we continue to rebound and stabilize this market. The last thing, and this is something that we're actually going to be taking action later this week, is a new contract, well, with a new vendor, I should say, the Oakland County Prescription Discount Program. And this is a free program to all residents, to make sure that they are, that they can receive the benefit of reduced prescription drug costs at the local pharmacies, the chains, et cetera. There's no cost to enroll or anything like that. The information will be, will be sent out through coast-to-coast, which the vendor will be signing a contract with. The great thing, I really call it a win-win-win program, that it's, the benefits are going to be greater than the current benefits that are in there. There are a number of Berkeley residents, just continue to use the, I mean, just closing out the using of the existing program. This will result in even greater benefits for those who don't have prescription drug coverage. The coast-to-coast is going to take on the responsibility of getting the word out to the people who need it and can benefit most from it. And as an added benefit, no cost to residents, that the County Board of Commissioners actually will receive a dollar twenty-five royalty for every prescription drug filled. As a result of that, that money will get pooled. We don't know how much is going to be total, because the programs, I mean, are starting to launch, but those monies will be pooled and very targeted and appropriate public health needs will be addressed, and so there's a revenue generating opportunity to address public health needs in our community. So we're really excited. We'll be taking action later this week to formalize that contract, and by end of this month, that it should be available to all residents. And I'll make sure that everyone, all of you have the information, you can fan it out, but I just heard that Mario Lopez is cutting commercials for it. So for those who know Mario Lopez, and, which I do, I mean, some of us do, it's back to those Saved by the Bell days, I mean, which is, I'm slightly tiddy myself. So, thank you very much for the time. Again, if there's any question, I can, I mean, best be contacted through the Oakland County website, my email, WoodwardD@OakGov.com. Also, my contact information, cell phone, all the information's on the website. So, thank you very much for the time this evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
My name is John Nicolai. I live on 2744 Elwood. I'm here today for a couple reasons. First of all, to promote and to let everyone know that on March 16th, the Second Annual Mayor's Cup hockey games are going to be occurring again. And actually, we're expanding it, that what these are hockey games, between the two middle schools, Anderson and Norup, in Berkeley. And it's, last year was obviously the first one, the first time we've done this, and it actually turned out very well, and the kids had a lot of fun, and they talked about it for a long time afterwards. And had so many kids come up to me after the game from the high school, saying, why didn't we do this when we were in middle school? So we kind of expanded a little bit to allow the kids in the high school to actually do this as well. And also, we're trying to do things to make it more fun for all the kids in the community, to allow more kids to come in and play these games. And so, our agenda actually, in the morning, is the high school, well, the high school hockey team, excuse me, will actually come in and work with our little guys, work with the little kids, mainly the seven-through-nine-year-olds, seven-through-ten, six-through-ten-year-olds, actually. And anyone in the communities can come for free and take instructions from the big kids, which is kind of cool. I don't know who had more fun last year, if it was the high school kids or the little kids, but they all came off with big smiles on their face, faces, and when the high school kids came, took all the little kids into the locker room and showed them all of their trophies that they had won that year, because the high school team did very well last year, that was kind of fun for everybody involved. So, and after that, we're doing community games, and then we're starting the actual Anderson-Norup games. I brought one of the trophies here that were donated by the mayor. This is the one for the sixth and seventh grade game. If you notice, the hockey stick is broken, but that's hockey for you, yeah. So, we'll get that fixed, though. So, March 16th is going to be a really fun day, pretty much from 10:30 all the way to 5:00. And actually, at the end, there's going to be an open skate for everybody, which I encourage everyone to come, and it should be a lot of fun. And another reason I just wanted to just bring this up is because I just wanted to say the state of hockey here in Berkeley. I, like, this last week, you know, the season's winding down, and I'm like a lot of parents, kind of glad about that. It's time, you see the snow kind of leaving, and I'm ready for the hockey bags to be put away for the year. But, but there are some teams here in Berkeley that are doing extremely well. We have, we have two of our house teams actually going to States and Grand Rapids this week, coming up in a couple weeks. And those are like eighth and ninth graders. And then we also have a group of third and fourth graders that are going all the way to Grand Rapids to play some games and see how they fare. But the fact that they've made it that far is a great tribute to them. We also have a travel team that's doing the Little Caesars Championships this weekend. If they win this week, they go to Joe Lewis and play in front of everybody, which should be a lot of fun for them as well. And of course, our high school program seems to be doing very well. They're doing well, and actually, they're adding a JV team this year, this next, coming up here. So lots of good things coming from hockey and also with the ice arena, which I thank all of you about. Again, March 16th, and here's the trophy again. I don't know, I don't know how you put that, but I appreciate everything that's allowing me to talk. Take care.
Thanks, John. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of Minutes, matter of approving the minutes of regular city council meeting on February 1st, 2013. Warrant number 1263, matter of approving warrant number 1263. Resolution number R713, matter of approving a resolution, supporting a better system for mental health services. And resolution number R813, matter of approving a resolution honoring Michigan State Police K-9 Stryker and Trooper Don Zonka.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Any corrections, changes? Seeing none, and Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt Anson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I have asked Councilmember Stedman to read Resolution 713.
This is supporting a better system for mental health services. Whereas promoting and supporting the mental health and well-being of all citizens is a significant issue for the City of Berkeley and the State of Michigan, whereas research has shown that prevention, early identification, and intervention are all-important in addressing problems related to mental illness in children, adolescents, adults, and families. Whereas providing effective treatment for mental health problems is an essential component to ensuring the safety of our citizens and the protection of our community. Whereas collaboration and integration among mental health care providers is necessary to increase access to services, maximize resources, and ensure that cost-effective mental health services are available to all. And whereas exploring options that may yield cost savings, such as shifting treatment of the mentally ill from state prisons to an outpatient recovery model treatment system, could save Michigan taxpayers millions of dollars every year and improve the chances for the mentally ill individuals to lead normal and productive lives. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Berkeley supports and urges the State of Michigan to review and revamp the mental health system so that people with mental illness and their families can have access to appropriate treatment, rehabilitation, and support services, which will then lead to improved outcomes in the management of mental health issues. Signed on March 4th, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. We can hardly overstate the importance of the mental health services and the delivery of mental health services in this state and across the country. And so, this is a very important issue to all our residents. And then now I've asked Councilmember Jack Blanchard to read Resolution R813.
As soon as the "honorree" comes in? Yeah, sure. Well, Don, you're not scared of us here. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan honoring Michigan State Police K-9 Stryker and Trooper Don Zonka. Whereas from 2004 to 2008, Michigan State Trooper Don Zonka and her K-9 Stryker served our community in both the Classic Car Parade and Woodward Dream Cruise events. And whereas Trooper Zonka and Stryker were both being assigned at the Metro North State Police Post in Oak Park. And whereas Stryker performed what is commonly known as bomb dog duties for these events in our community, as well as staging with us to provide a response anywhere along the event, in addition to walking patrol with our officers and providing traffic assistance. And whereas both Troopers Zonka and Stryker were, excuse me, whereas Trooper Zonka and Stryker were very outgoing with citizens, explaining the duties and abilities of Stryker, as well as being petted by many curious and happy children. And whereas both Troopers Zonka and Stryker are great representation of the Michigan State Police to our community, and whereas Stryker was retired in December of 2012, now therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves Section 1 that the City of Berkeley and its residents wish to thank and express their gratitude to K-9 Stryker and Trooper Don Zonka and the Michigan State Police for their assistance in these events and for their service to our community, introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, March 5th, 2013.
Thank you.
Signed, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being here, and for all you do as well for our Cruise Fest and our Dream Cruise, and for the safety measures that you all take for our residents. And this dog, of course, has had a prominent role in that, and we are thankful and we wish him a happy retirement.
Don, this is, this is for you, because we know he can't read, and that's for Stryker. Having worked with you and Stryker, it's an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We love Berkeley.
Thank you.
Thank you. We wish he's still staying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Stryker, enjoy your retirement.
Hi, Stryker. Good dog.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda?
Oath of Office, matter of the city clerk administering the oath of office to Public Safety Officer Michael J. Bunting.
Mr. Sessa?
Yes, I know that our Public Safety Director has a brief announcement to make regarding this issue, but unfortunately, because of scheduling issues, we're going to have to bring this back to the city council's attention. However, Chief Eshman, is there something you'd like to add?
No, we will be at the next session. We had a conflict in scheduling and a miscommunication on my part, not undoing it, and we will be at the next meeting. Thank you.
Well, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So then, Ms. Boucher, please read item number three on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M713, matter of appointing Tim Canty to serve as an alternate to the border review with a term expiring July 2017.
Is there a motion to approve M713?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack. Mr. Sessa?
You know, council ordinarily, we have really good members that attend our border review. Unfortunately, this year, we had an individual who was ill, and so, we decided to figure out if we could have an alternative of some sort. We asked the city attorney to take a look at our laws and in accordance with state law, and this is Section 211.39. It does permit the city council to appoint two individuals to the alternate position. And so, in line with that, we are recommending that the city council consider Mr. Tim Canty for this position. Just to give you a little bit of a background, Mr. Canty is a retired individual. His work has primarily been in the area of administration and finance, this is with home mortgages. He's also been an operations manager with a home improvement company. He has been a resident of the City of Berkeley for over 49 years. With regards to his interests and qualifications for this appointment, he lists common sense, integrity, appreciation, and interest to both the needs and interests of the citizens and the city management, also concerned with financial issues and real estate. When I, we asked him as to if there was any other information that he felt would be pertinent to assisting the city council in this election, he wrote, "A citizen has the responsibility to serve both his fellow citizens and the city as a whole, and for that reason, he is asking the city council to please consider him to this appointment." Your Honor?
Thank you. I suppose common sense is not so common, but Mr. Canty has quite a supply of common sense. Other any questions, discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Ms. Boucher, please call the roll.
Councilmember Platt Anson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, could you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M1313, matter of appointing Michelle Buckler to serve on the Planning Commission with a term expiring July 2014.
Is there a motion to approve M1313?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Mr. Sessa?
Council, under this item, we simply had an individual who could no longer attend some of the Planning Commission meetings, and so, she did ask at this time to no longer be a member, so we will be bringing a note of appreciation later on. But, but for now, city council, this position is appointed by the mayor, but of course, it does need approval of the city council. And I know the mayor considered a few individuals for this position, and after all was said and done, we did, or I should say, the mayor, the mayor did, would like to recommend to you Ms. Michelle Buckler. And just to give you a little background of Ms. Buckler, she is obviously a resident of the City of Berkeley. She is an- She is an environmental engineer. And she has 23-plus years working as an environmental civil engineer in both industry and consulting. Her past experience includes site investigation, remediation, site development, and environmental health and safety management. She currently provides consulting services for sustainability planning, climate change adaptation, and industrial compliance. And she adds her resume also for the city council to consider. So as you can see, she has quite an extensive background. She has been a resident of the city of Berkeley for 8.5 years. When we asked her what her interests and qualifications for this appointment were, she stated that she was interested in a holistic and purposeful planning of her home city. She has the technical, managerial, organizational, and communication skills to be a functional member of the team. When we asked her if there was any other information she would like the city council to consider in appointing her, she states that she has worked with the city of Berkeley through the Oakland County Woodward 5 Sustainability Planning Project and finds that city leaders have a clear vision and boundless energy to make Berkeley a great community. And she would like to contribute her time and skills to this effort. She is in the audience this evening, Your Honor, if she would like to simply note that she's here. I don't know if she wants to say anything. Get up here. But it's, Your Honor, it's up to you now.
Thank you very much. I reviewed the resumes carefully, and I noted that she has degrees from multiple universities. And there was, one hesitates to point out weaknesses in her resume.[708.25][708.25](Laughter). But there was no degree from Oakland University.[714.25][714.25](Laughter). We can rectify that. But I think Michelle will be a wonderful addition to the Planning Commission and bring a valuable perspective, and also fit in well with the folks that do such a wonderful job on that Planning Commission. And thank you for volunteering for this. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
Yes.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes.
That was close.
That was close.
Ms. Boucher, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Motion Number M-813, matter of approving the application by Bellarney Stone Pub, 27253 Woodward Avenue, for temporary authorization of outdoor alcohol sales.
Is there a motion to approve M-813?
Motion to approve M-813?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak with support by Councilmember Kadekko. Mr. Sessa?
Council, this is an item that has appeared before you many times in previous years. And I know that we've always had a positive experience in working with the Bellarney Stone on this matter. Just to give you a few more items, please know that whatever is done tonight, this is still subject to approval by the, or from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. So this still needs approval by them. Just to let the people know out there, that she's looking for 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, March 16th, to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, March 17th. And then, from 12:00 noon on Sunday, March 17th, to 1:00 p.m. on Monday, March 18th. And she's looking to apply in an extended area in her place of residence. A copy of her application is attached for your information, Your Honor. As I said, this still needs approval from the Liquor License Commission. I know that our Public Safety Department has gone over this, and they are recommending it for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Your Honor, and I know Public Safety is here as well.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Platt Onson?
Just, we're seeing something a little bit different than we're seeing in years past, because it looks like we're looking at all-day Saturday and all-day Sunday. And I believe it's typically just St. Patrick's Day, like a one-day event. So I don't know if city manager or Deputy Chief North has any idea as to why that might be the case, or...
I think it's probably the case because this is the first time in a very long time we're seeing Patrick's Day falls on a Sunday. So we expect that there would be a certain amount of people engaged in the revelry on Saturday, as well as on Sunday.
It is probably likely that there will be more people on Saturday than Sunday.
That is a very, very possibility, Your Honor.
Because people have to go to work on Monday. So sometimes, they celebrate the day before more commonly. Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that Bellarney Stone has always cooperated. They've always made sure things are done in the right manner, and I intend to fully support this.
Will the mayor be making onsite inspections on St. Patrick's Day?
I think in the interests of quality control, it will be necessary.[943.54][943.54](Laughter).
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions? Any questions to be made on this issue? Very good. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-813?
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes.
I will apparently be leaving town now.
Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M-913, matter of approving special use approval for the reestablishment of a drive-through for Tubby Submarines 2375 Coolidge.
Is there a motion to approve M-913?
Motion to approve M-913? Support.
It's moved by Mayor Protem Turbrak with support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sessa?
Council, as you can see in the report that was put together by our city planner, Ms. Amy Vanson, the city council has the final say on special land use considerations. I'd be happy to go over this item, but our city planner is with us this evening. And as such, I'd like to ask her to just simply please go over this item with the city council. Ms. Vanson?
Thank you.
Good evening. Tubby Submarine is going in, wants to go in where the old Taco Bell has been vacant for quite some time. And they simply want to reestablish it the way it was. Very little changes to the site have been proposed. The architect for the project, Jason Krieger, is here this evening if you wanted to look at the site plan, and he's brought boards. But they simply needed to reestablish the drive-through, drive-through uses or special land uses. And because this has been vacant for more than six months under Berkeley City Code, it needs to go through the whole approval process again. But very little changes are proposed for the site itself. They do intend to paint the building, although something muted was what the architect had advised. That's not the subject of tonight, but I know that that had been an issue previously with a previous tenant. So the drive-through is going to be reestablished. It is kind of an odd drive-through because it was retrofitted back before fast food chains had drive-throughs. It does seem to work. Public Safety's reviewed it. They tweaked the arrows a bit so that even though the exits are on the wrong side of the road, as far as how we drive in America, they will be together, not separated. So it does seem to work. There haven't been any issues according to Public Safety's review, but that was the one tweak that they made. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We had a public hearing, no public comment, as you can see in the report. And it, we're happy to see something going in.
Indeed. Are there any questions? Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick comment. Did you verify the colors of the building?
Muted was what I was told. Muted.
Thank you. Councilmember Platt Onson?
Two quick things. I was unfortunately out of town for work for the meeting, but I had the joy of utilizing DVR to spend my weekend catching up. And I guess, I don't know if Public Safety can speak to a little bit. Has anybody seen this configuration with In-N-Out being on opposite sides?
Yeah, it was...
It's counterintuitive, so...
It is, but they don't have a way of wrapping around the building because they don't own the land on the other side. So the way it worked with Taco Bell is, yeah, you entered on the left and then circled around, and you exited on the right. The change that Tubby's had proposed was having the non-drive-through exit, so you went in and ate, and now you're leaving, be on the right-hand side of the main driveway. And the folks coming in would be in the middle. And that, this configuration of out, in, out concern Public Safety. They want both outs this way and the in down here. So at least, you're not trying to sandwich.
That was interesting. Also, totally unrelated to what we're voting on, but I was a little disappointed that we weren't seeing more changes on the outside of the building. Not that it's not delightful the way it is, but hoping it would be spruced up a little more. But I'm happy something's going in.
I think that's a really hard design to spruce up. I've seen them all over Metro Detroit, and boy, you know it right away. That used to be a Taco Bell. Just like that used to be an old Jack in the Box. Spot 'em a mile away.
Any other questions?
Just a question.
Councilmember Blanchard?
What's the timeline for this?
Go ahead, Jason.
Well, subject to approval, probably eight weeks, maybe. Eight to 10 weeks, I'll be open, hopefully.
Very good.
Thank you.
Sir, can you just tell us who you are, just for the record?
Oh, Jason Krieger with Krieger Platt Architects. It's 1412 East 11th Mall, Raleigh.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, if there isn't any further discussion of this, then we are ready to vote. And Ms. Boucher, please call the roll on M-913.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, please read item number seven on the agenda.
Motion Number M-1013, matter of approving a special use approval for the establishment of an open-air farm stand on 12 Mile Road.
Is there a motion to approve M-1013?
Motion to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Platt Onson with support by Councilmember Kadekko. Mr. Sessa?
Council, again, this is a special use approval, and it can only be finalized by the city council. Our city planner does such a great job at putting these reports together. I would like to ask her again to just go over this item with the city council. Ms. Vanson?
Hi again. So the Berkeley Farm Stand, Laura Yulina came to the city last year and said, "I'm a Berkeley, I was a Berkeley native, and I want to do a farm stand." And so, we talked about the parameters that are in the ordinance, and so we settled on two seasonal sale permits, which is 90 days under ordinance. And that got us through the fall and that time period. And it was very popular and very successful. And so, Ms. Yulina decided, "I want to do this all season." And so, we talked about, again, the ordinance parameters. And I said, "Well, it's going to be a special land use because it's going to be as permanent as any open-air use is in Michigan." So she has applied. And she has a very impressive business plan, very detailed. She's going to be held up as an example for other applicants when I tell them what a business plan ought to look like. And she came before the Planning Commission. And Planning Commission held a public hearing actually back in November. Ms. Yulina, we had some dates crossed and so forth. Public hearing was held then, and the decision, the recommendation was postponed until Ms. Yulina could be there. She did have a representative there, her manager, Ms. Bates, was there last week. And we did have one objection from a grocery store owner, held a representative, was present at a couple of the meetings. And he was not at the meeting last week. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this to the city council. It was unanimous. And there are a number of conditions I outlined. This is kind of a new thing for us to have, permanent open-air use, not affiliated with a business. Usually, we have it associated with whether it's a sidewalk cafe. So I had recommended a number of stipulations, and the Planning Commission concurred with most of them. They are in your motion for approval, that we get a business license from Ms. Yulina that merchandise sold, be limited to fruits, vegetables, eggs, and plant material not grown on-site. There was concern about it becoming a used book fair or a craft fair, not what had been represented. We would want a copy of liability insurance, which she did provide for the seasonal sale portion, because she did have some animals and so forth. While this does have municipal parking credit, this particular area, and Mr. Don Venzel owns the entire block, I, again, this is part of my job, that I have to think of worst-case scenarios, and I'm kind of a downer sometimes. But I was concerned that should, for whatever reason, Clark's Ice Cream, which is now providing the restrooms and the very close parking, that should that be sold to another property owner, and maybe there can't be an agreement that the city does not end up in a parking problem, and Ms. Yulina's protected as well. So I did recommend that a signed agreement between the property owner and the business owner with regard to shared parking and the restroom use be on file. And that this is only granted to Berkeley Farm Stand, and should Ms. Yulina decide that this isn't the best time to have seven days a week, all summer long, that, and she wants to sell it, that they would, that whoever's going to be the new business owner would again have to come before the Planning Commission and city council for approval.
Very good.
Are there any questions?
Always conditions. Are there any questions? Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last Dream Cruise meeting, there was concern because that's where we have the blowups every year for the kids on Cruise Fest night. I spoke with Mr. Venzel over the weekend. I spoke with Mrs. Yulina a couple times today. I spoke with Mrs. Vanson. I spoke with Mr. Coon, the chairperson of the Dream Cruise Committee. And also, Mr. Caldwell and his staff and I were out there today measuring the area. And after speaking with Mrs. Yulina, who's been more than gracious, we feel that we're going to be able to compromise and put the blowups in the back of the field. And we may have to alter the types of blowups because of the height restriction due to the wires and the trees that are there. So I just want to rest everyone, rest assured everyone that we are going to go forward with the blowups in that area. Thank you.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
One thing that came up at the Planning Commission meeting that, and I know where it's fruits, vegetables, eggs, et cetera, came from, it was another zoning area, I believe, another...
Yeah, we, under the ordinance in the 12 Mile District, we define open-air business uses more extensively than we did in the downtown area. Because when we carved out the downtown area, we were looking at doing other things. So we do allow it, but we just don't go on about it.
Right. So my only question is, and building off, I think perhaps Commissioner Dean Smith had brought it up. If, for instance, honey or something were to be sold from this location, which seems very fitting for a farm stand and very fitting coming from a farm, because it's not plant material or eggs, are things like that going to be an issue?
I don't think so. I think, I think how this is going to end up being enforced is largely, you know, if we see a complaint, or if it suddenly morphs into, you know, as Dean Smith said, old Tonka trucks for sale and things like that. And that's going to be really obvious. And then a letter gets sent saying, you know, "This was, you know, this is what you represented. This is not things that are grown or cultivated on a farm." And so, I think that, I don't know that you need to list everything that, you know, I would think some, I guess you can't grow aloe in Michigan, but I'm thinking of, you know, aloe and, yeah, that sort of thing.
Is the word, are the words something more like farm product or something more inclusive?
You can certainly add that, yeah.
My only concern, I guess, is that there was some opposition from a neighbor who showed up to several, from a business neighbor who showed up to several meetings, and maybe extra diligent in writing letters and things like that due to the level at which he opposed. I just want to make sure that, I mean, I would certainly hope to see or expect to see something like honey or something like that at a farm market. I just want to make sure we're not setting her up for conflict. I think the idea is completely correct in making sure, you know, it's in a flea market or something. I just want to make sure that we use the right language so as not to set ourselves up for challenges.
Hi, I'm Laura Yulina, and I'm really excited to be doing this back in Berkeley. I would just, to that point, I would just say, if you would like, I could forward you with... I would just, to that point, I would just say, if you would like, I could forward you. We have UMTIN farmer market leases that we sign every year, and they have very precise wording about Michigan farm products, leaving it vague enough to include anything that the season might bring, but definitely eliminating any of the flea market kinds of products. And, you know, it speaks to being Michigan-grown, farm-based, handmade, you know, those kinds of things. So, and just to put any other worries to rest, we certainly have no, no interest in selling, yeah, Tonka Trucks. We just really want to unload a lot of trees. So, I mean, it's not, that's not a worry at all. But I would like the wording to, like you said, and, you know, sort of be more vague so that it's farm-based, but it's not limited to these four items that are listed here, because there are lots of things depending on how the season progresses. Sometimes, we have to dig a little deeper and get more creative with what we can bring off the farm, you know? So, certainly, there would be honey, there would be maple syrup. And it doesn't just come from our farm. And we're trying to source lots of Michigan farms around us to bring more of a variety to the stand. So, you know, last season wasn't a very good example of a Michigan farming season. We're hoping to have more of a typical Michigan farming season and be very abundant and have lots of variety. But, you know, some of the farmers' leases go so far as to ask you to list every single solitary piece of produce that you might be offering at your farm stand, and, you know, that seems a little extreme, too. But if you'd like, I can forward you some of that wording. Well, I think we want to have something tonight.
Yes. Let me, let me ask Councilmember Platt Anson, if you are suggesting that we include the word farm, products after farm in this, in this motion?
I'm trying to find...
Number seven.
Yeah. Well, so I was specifically referring to the conditions, limited to fruits, vegetables, eggs, and plant material not grown on site. So, I was just thinking, could we do merchandise sold, shall be limited to farm product, not grown on site, not produced on site? Not grown on site?
Not produced on, yeah.
Farm products has to be produced, because you're not talking about growing everything at that point.
Right.
Grown or produced.
Got that? Yeah.
So, we're doing Michigan, we're saying farm products?
Yes, we're putting in farm products at the end of that list.
Not produced on site?
Not produced on site, correct.
Yeah. Does everybody understand that? Now, are you proposing a motion to that effect?
That was going to be my next question. Do we need discussion? Do I need a motion?
You need a motion.
Okay. So, yes, I would like to make a motion that we...
Amend this.
Amend this to include the language we just reviewed.
Perfect. Is there a second up to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim and several others. Okay, any discussion now on this amendment? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadakel?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt Anson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, we're back to the original motion that has been amended. Any additional discussion on that? Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, please call the roll on M-1013.
Councilmember Kadakel?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt Anson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Boucher, can you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-1113, matter of approving CareNet's Walk for Life on Saturday, May 4th, 2013, from 9:30 a.m. until 12:00 p.m.
Is it a motion to approve M-1113?
Motion to approve M-1113.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack?
Support.
With support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Sessa.
You know, Your Honor, I know that I've brought this item before you in past years again, but just for our viewing audience to tell you a little bit about CareNet, they are a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization, and it is supported by individuals and churches in our area, and they offer all their services at no charge. And the types of services that they offer include things such as free pregnancy tests, counseling, one-on-one counseling for new moms, parenting classes, material services provide, providing baby clothing and maternity clothing. They also provide baby equipment and furniture. To tell you a little bit about this event, they're looking to do a two-mile walk at the Berkeley High School, and they're going to be walking through the neighborhoods past the center, which is located at 2826 Coolidge Highway, and then return back to the Berkeley High School. I know that our Public Safety Department has reviewed this request, and they have indicated no objections. Again, they're a great group to work with, and we certainly recommend them. I know our Deputy Chief is here to help me answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions, discussion on this topic? Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, will you please call the roll on M-1113?
Councilmember Platt Anson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadakel?
Yes.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine?
Motion number M-1213, matter of authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Plant Moran, P L L C, 27400 Northwestern Highway, Southfield, Michigan, 48034, to perform the annual audit of the city of Berkeley for a five-year fiscal period, starting with the 6/30/13 audit and ending with the 6/30/17 audit.
Is it a motion to approve M-1213?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
You know, Counsel, one of the most important things, or the important documents that the city is required to produce is our annual audit. And this is done in accordance with Chapter 9.8 of the Berkeley City Charter. And under this, under the charter, it says that the city must receive an annual financial audit of all of the accounts of the city of Berkeley. Also, these audits must be made by certified public accountants experienced in municipal accounting. The State of Michigan Public Act 2 of 1968 also requires municipalities, very much like the city of Berkeley, to have this annual audit and that they be done on an annual basis. Both the city and the state require the results of the audit to be published, with the state treasurer receiving a copying of said annual report as well. Now, I've asked our, our Finance Director to meet with Plant Moran in the preparation of an audit, I mean, of a contract. And he does meet with them also when they prepare the audit as well. One of the things that the City Council has directed is, is that after a certain amount of time, they also require us to perhaps maybe consider going out to bid for this type of service. But I know that both myself and the Finance Director have been extremely pleased with the work that Plant Moran has been providing the city of Berkeley, and we believe that they do such a, such an excellent job, that we would like for the City Council to consider a five-year agreement with Plant Moran. As you can see in the report that was put together by our Finance Director, one of the things that the city of Berkeley is doing for the first time in a long, long time is to provide a comprehensive annual financial report, or the CAFER as we know it all. And I think we did it this past year for the first time. When we take that into consideration, you can see that the breakdown of their fee is about 4.2% less. And the Finance Director gives us a very detailed explanation as to how he came about in the preparation of this, of this audit. Counsel, it's rare that I have an opportunity to work with a consultant and a group of people that do their jobs so well, and I know that the Finance Director and the Finance Staff can attest to this as well. We very strongly encourage you to consider this contract and approve it. Ms. Beth Bailey from Plant Moran is also here. I don't know if she'd like to stand up, please, and help us answer any questions that the City Council may have. But before she answers any questions, I know that the Finance Director is very anxious to also inform the City Council as to what he feels about this contract. So, thank you, Ms. Bailey, for attending. Mr. Sabuda, would you like to add anything else, sir?
Thank you, Mrs. De Sessa. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. This is a five-year contract. We're estimating that over the five years, the cost would be approximately $226,000 or about $46,000 annually. This is the premier, in my opinion, auditing firm in the state of Michigan. And not only do we get auditing services for that fee, but we also get federal healthcare reform assistance, federal state and tax reporting assistance if we need it, help on legislative matters if we need it. And in personnel, because we are a small operation, if we have personnel issues in implementing benefits, Plant Moran is there to assist us, and rarely, if ever, do we get a fee. So, not only are you getting an auditing firm, you're getting a full-service financial outfit to help us when we need it. And it's all based, and all baked into the, into the fees that we have, and I think that's also important to note here. And again, we are recommending Plant Moran for the, for the five-year period. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth, is there anything you want to add?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for consideration of an extension of our contract. I've been involved with the audit now, I think, three or four years, and have always found the city to be a great client to work with. One of the things that I'm most impressed with is your openness to constructive feedback. We've, I think, have a good working relationship with the management of the city, can be very open about things that need to be addressed, and the city's very proactive about going ahead and addressing those things. And as a result of that, I think that that's helped us to keep the fee where it's at. We're actually proposing a fee decrease and then freezing that fee for three years, which is similar to something that we did a couple of years back. So, without the efforts of the Finance Department and the staff at the city, that really wouldn't be possible. We have a lot of clients where if we have things that we want them to work on, there's a lot of haggling back and forth and extra meetings, and it's kind of arm-twisting to get them to do what we feel is the right thing. And here at Berkeley, there's always been a good spirit of cooperation with the auditors. So, again, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this important topic? This is a five-year contract. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for coming out tonight, Mr. Sabuda. Thank you for the detailed report, and City Manager for the opening context around this item before us here tonight. This is indeed an important document, and the process, I think, is so important to ensure that the finances are properly attended to and everything lines up the way it's meant to in accordance with, with our charter, with the proper procedures. Because at the end of the day, it's the citizen's money, it's the residents' money, and as we gain accountability into where it's going and how it's being minded, I think that's an important thing. I will be supporting this. I do appreciate your, the relationship that we've, that the city has worked with you over the years. As you've mentioned, the exchange of information has been prompt and professional. I think the quality of the materials has been superb. And I also am grateful for the reduction in fees followed by a flat rate for the first three years. I think that's important to, to show that the costs of this are part of the whole equation as well. And just one final point, through our Michigan Municipal League contacts, this firm is well-established and well-represented with other communities, and we stand in strong support with other communities as they move forward with their decisions. Glad to join them here with us. I'll be supporting this tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment?
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I agree with my colleague. Over the period of the last several years on this council, I've had the pleasure of working with Plant and Moran staff and as mayor as well, the very detailed questioning of the elected officials representing the people, in addition to the detailed analysis of the figures, the mathematics of the finances, has impressed me greatly. And the promptness and thoroughness of the reports, and the clarity of those reports as well, that they have meaning in the context of our work here representing the people. And so, I'm thankful, and I'll be supporting it as well. If there are no other comments, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-1213?
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadakel?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt Anson?
Yes.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Boucher, could you please read item number 10?
Resolution number R-913, matter of adopting resolution, authorization the mayor and city manager to execute an agreement with the Berkeley School District to collect and remit their 2013 property tax levy.
Is it a motion to approve R-913?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack with support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, this item also comes to you on an annual basis, and I'm sure you've read the letter that was sent to you all by Mr. Larry Gallagher, the Deputy Superintendent. And basically, what this, what this, this item does is that it allows the city of Berkeley to provide tax collection services to the school for a full fiscal year. However, as you can see in the memorandum that was put together by our Finance Director, the Berkeley School District only levies during the July tax bill. And with that, we are recommending this, Your Honor. I don't know if our Finance Director would like to add? Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Mrs. De Sessa. Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Again, this is an annual contract. We're collecting the school taxes, but it's also to note that we're also collecting taxes for other, for other taxing units, the county, Huron Clinton Metro Authority, the school district, the state of Michigan. So, this is one of the few times where we do enter into a contract for, for collection of taxes. In exchange for our services, we get to keep the interest in the administrative fees that are applicable to the charge that the school, the school district levies in tax. And this is, this is something that we've done forever, at least since '06, but this goes back a long way. So, again, I would recommend the contract.
Thank you. So, what you're saying is that when we pay our tax bill to the city, we're actually paying money to the county. Some of that goes to the county?
That is correct.
Some of it goes to the school district?
Some of it goes to the school district, some of it goes to the state of Michigan?
Some of it goes to the state of Michigan.
The Huron Clinton Metro Authority, the zoo, the DIA?
We don't get to keep very much.
No, we don't. But we handle all that, all those funds, and we, and we collect them and then send them out on a periodic basis, back to the taxing units.
Correct. Thank you very much. It is what we do every year, of course. Are there any other additional questions, discussion on this? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, please call the roll on R-913.
Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadakel?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt Anson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 11?
Resolution number R-1013, matter of adopting a resolution approving budget amendments for the 2012-2013 fiscal year.
Is it a motion to approve R-1013?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, you know that, I know we just approved a contract with our auditors, and one of the things that they check on us is to make sure that we spend our monies accordingly, and that we do our best to stay within the budget constraints that the City Council has, has given us. But in accordance with Public Act 2 of 1968 as amended, any changes that we make to our budget, we must present to the City Council, and we must explain how those dollars are being spent and where those monies are coming from. And with that, to give us a brief summary of all these items that we're about to discuss, I will turn this over to our Finance Director to go over these items with the City Council. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Mrs. De Sessa. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, you have 12 budget amendments before you this evening. Total spending in the general fund, new spending, $43,987, as compared to a $20 million budget. On the special revenues of the enterprise funds, you have $18,455 of new spending, for a total of approximately $62,400 worth of new spending, again, on a $20 million budget. The good news also is we have... The good news also is we have $80,550 of new revenue coming in, $23,000 in special revenues, $57,550 in general fund revenue. Item A, that is before you, we'll go right into the revenues. We are seeing an increase in the building permits, and the heating, electrical, building, plumbing, business licenses, we're seeing an increase here. And you can certainly see the economy starting to turn around a bit, and $57,550, the majority that is in this section. Item B, also general fund, is now we're into the expenditures. Basically, what's happening here is we had an officer deployed, military deployment in Afghanistan, and we are covering that hole with overtime. And what we're doing is we're moving monies from one line item to another. At the end of the day, the Public Safety Department is reducing expenses by $1,600. But please note that $55,000 in salary is going to the line, $50,000 of that is going to overtime. So, in order to make up that shortfall in staffing, overtime is being utilized. Item C is the building department expenses. With the increase in revenues, you see the increase in expenses. There's more inspections going on, there's more permits being issued, and the inspection team is much busier. So, we're looking at $37,000 in additional expenses in that area. Dream Cruise, item D, general fund, for the first time, we're breaking out the, in the accounts of the city, we are breaking out the Dream Cruise expenditures as applicable to the APSP depart, or the DPW, excuse me. So, usually, those dollars are buried, and we have to dig them out every year in order to give you the annual report on Dream Cruise. We're going to make it easier, and we're going to have just one-line items, so we're setting the budget up for that one-line item. Item E is a miscellaneous adjustment for the Recreation Department of $100, net effect is zero. Item F, we're getting into the special revenue funds. The first one is the Major Street Fund. We're increasing expenses by $22,447. This is something that we have forecasted. We are trying to maintain our roads. As you know, we're spending more on the roads, and we're trying to maintain that infrastructure. Item G, local streets, again, we're looking at spending $28,318 more than originally appropriated. Again, we're seeking that this is in maintaining our road system, and this is our people working on the roads from July through today's date. Solid Waste Fund, good news here, we're reducing expenses by $42,000. The big issue is, the way we were picking up leaves, we were using a lot of equipment. We're not using a lot of our equipment any longer. The DPW is able to manage that in a little bit different manner, and our equipment rental, we feel, has dropped dramatically from $95,000 down to $50,000 in rental expenses, which is really good. Net overall, we're looking at a $42,000 decrease in expenses in the rubbish fund. Court building revenues, $23,000 up. This is where the judge levies fines on tickets, and this is helping, eventually, help us with the building or maintaining this structure as it is applicable to the court. Item J, water expenses, okay. Basically, this is, what is happening here is we've had a lot of water main breaks, especially in the northwest part of the town. Our guys spend a lot of time out there. The good news here is we're moving monies between line items here. We had $6,000, $6,000 to $8,000 in additional expenses dealing with this overtime issue and water main breaks and dealing with the water sewer system, and we are able to lower the loss expense as we come to the end of the fiscal year. We're not going to see losses for general liability suits, and we're going to take that appropriation and move it and cover the overtime. Your item K is recreation. We are seeing an additional $10,850 in expenses in miscellaneous programs and contract services. We're busy. People are using our services, and we're putting a lot more resources in that area. We're also seeing more revenues in that area. So, we need to increase the programming expenses for recreation revolving programs. Item L is a miscellaneous item. We hired some staffing, replacement staffing at the district court, and we require full-time staffers to have a physical. They didn't have anything appropriated for physicals, so we're setting up $500 for physicals to make sure that we cover those costs. And with that, that concludes the 12 amendments. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have. I know I went through that fast. Hopefully, I covered the ground.
Are there questions for our Finance Director? I know we're losing some money on the roads. I'm wondering if the freeze-thaw cycles are probably costing us?
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely. They're out there, they're coal patching, they're also doing the joint crack sealing, all that, to maintain the roads and the road system, absolutely. So, and again, this is from a July through, basically, the end of February timeframe. So, we're catching up and making sure that you see those additional expenses in a timely manner.
Very good. Councilmember Platt Onson?
I just actually wanted to point something out that I thought was interesting as we went through this. So, a while back, I don't know, maybe not quite a year ago, we revisited some fees that we were charging in regards to services, including things such as the audio/video duplication in public safety and the breathalyzer tests, just so the public sort of understands what that translates to, because, you know, when we're talking through it, it's not real numbers. So, we're looking at additional revenue of $8,400 from, basically, just getting back the cost of the services that we were providing. So, as we go through the process, and as the City Planner and as public safety goes through some of those things, it's interesting to see how some of the fees that we've adjusted for permitting and for those public safety services over the course of the year has actually had a pretty major impact for a pretty, I mean, we're talking, there were things like $5 difference in fees and things like that, so it's just interesting to see it here.
Thank you.
That's a good observation. Any other questions for our Finance Director or discussion on the topic? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a question, cable franchise fees are up. What's $34,000? What causes that?
Well, people are taking their dishes down, and they're buying-
Just more people on you.
Comcast, or Huawei, or AT&amp;T, and the dishes are coming down, and they are buying the larger packages, and they're paying that fee on their package, and that's what's driving that figure.
It's a substantial amount, $34,000.
It is. It goes with the trend. People are using our recreation services. People are staying home, and they're entertaining at home. They're not taking that big trip, they're not taking that extra, they're not doing that extra event, and this is how people are being entertained.
Thank you.
Which reminds us, with regard to our parks and recreation facilities, how increasingly more important these services are in our community.
Absolutely.
Very good. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-1013?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Terbrak?
Yes.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, we come to communications, and Councilmember Blanchard is first up tonight.
I just have one item, and that's to remind everybody that we have the Home Expo coming up this weekend at the high school to encourage people, if they're going to make changes in their home, to use local contractors and support all our local businesses. I think it's 10 to 4 on Saturday of the hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA, continues its budgeting work for the upcoming fiscal year, the 2013-2014 cycle is soon before us here, and so, thanks to them for their work in identifying some interesting projects and trying to find ways to help put a reasonable proposal together for us to consider. So, I applaud their work with that, and they welcome input and feedback from the businesses and residents as well, because it's our downtown to share and enjoy. On the transit front, there were some questions about the whole sequester thing that's going on at the national level, and to what extent will that impact any of the work that we're doing on here. And a couple of initiatives that are worth noting, we have an alternatives analysis study, which is being performed on Woodward Avenue. And what that's meant to do is, again, to, as its name implies, identify the alternatives and do some analysis on it, hence the alternatives analysis. That funding has been secured from prior budget cycles and is on track to continue fully funded. The M-1 rail project downtown likewise has received some seed money to help it get started. It hasn't actually received yet, but it's in the process of working its way through that funding source, and that will be sustained as well as we go forward with these things. So, that's what I know on that front. The transit work continues, and I'm very grateful to help be a part of that. And all the folks here in this room, there's many of us that have been involved in many of the great transit discussions so far, and encourage you to help us continue the dialogue to ensure that we have options that are safe and reliable and affordable for all of us as we seek to get from point A to point B. Another initiative that's going on around town is a, we talked earlier about the Berkeley farm stand, and there's a community garden that's looking to establish its roots as well in the area. And this is a coalition with the Song and Spirit Institute for Peace in partnership with the Neighborhood Garden Coalition, is putting together some proposals to set up a, to design, develop, and sustain an accessible community garden for people with disabilities. Some of you may know I'm on a board that deals with therapeutic and performing arts, art therapy for folks with mental and physical disabilities. And so, when I hear about these kinds of initiatives, especially one that's here in our own town of Berkeley, it gives me reason to look into that and to see how and what ways we might be able to help support that. So, my intent here is to communicate that they're looking to get started on this project, to put an organic vegetable farm and educational programs in place that is designed to be run by those with disabilities right here in Berkeley, and to be a model for the state and the nation in terms of how these kinds of community gardens would be planned and designed and implemented over time. And for more information on this piece with the National Garden Coalition, they have a website, which is theNGC.org. So, it's the National, or Neighborhood Garden Coalition, NGC, theNGC.org. And they're looking to establish something on Harvard, just west of Coolidge. So, I think that's exciting. And finally, it's Albert Schweitzer who once said, "At times, our own light goes out and is rekindled by the spark of another person. Each of us has cause to think with deep gratitude of those who have lighted the flame within us." And again, that's, "At times, our own light goes out and is rekindled by the spark of another person. Each of us has cause to think with deep gratitude of those who have lighted the flame within us." And that means a lot to me. Today is National Hug a GI Day. It's Hug a GI Day. So, those who have, it is actual day, those who have given service or continue to serve us so bravely here and overseas, today is the National Hug a GI Day. And so, when I think about the kinds of flames that help rekindle my spirit, they certainly contribute a lot to that. So, when I looked into it a little bit in terms of why today, you know, because the date reminds them and us to March 4th. Today's March 4th. I actually didn't make that up either.
Don't get it.
So, thank you. I add a little humor to that, but it's fantastic things that they do, and with all sincerity for those, all of us that know or love and have benefit from those that serve the country, please, you know, reach out and express your gratitude. Join me in thanking them for all that they do. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Terbrak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we march forth here in our communications, a few things that I'd like to address on the Parks and Rec side first. I want to thank John for coming in today and talking about Berkeley Hockey Day that we have coming up, March 16th. You know, I've been involved in hockey for a long time, and the fact that it seems to be almost a little bit of a rebirth, a renewal of energy in hockey around the city. And we're going to talk about some more things related to hockey in the ice arena in the work session. So, there's a lot of momentum there. It's a great event, and thank you for all the work you've done and continue to do for that. Also, in the Parks and Recreation Department, this Saturday, March 9th, at 6:00 p.m., there's Berkeley Cartoon Theater. These events have become quite popular in the past. It is a laugh-filled hour of classic cartoons. My colleague can actually hold up a, oh, there we go. Laugh-filled hour of classic cartoons and animated short films for the whole family. Savannah White, thank you. $2 youth and seniors, $3 adults, $8 for your family, so it's a nice discount there if you bring your family. Tickets available in advance. You can also get them at the door, or at the Berkeley Community Center. Aside from that, a few months ago, the Berkeley, or the City Council commissioned a subcommittee to review proposals for the City Attorney. Myself, Councilmember Stedman, and Councilmember Blanchard were appointed to this committee and were tasked with poring over all of the RFPs that came in. And I just want to give everybody a little update on where we are in that process and how we got to the position that we're at. One of the reasons that we went out to bid, not because we were unhappy with Mr. Schneider, but, no, it is our responsibility to make sure that, at least every few years, we're examining all of our contracts, looking out for what's out there, making sure that we are doing the absolute best for our residents, providing the highest quality services at the most efficient economic rates. So, we went out for bid, very popular bid. We had 21 proposals actually come back for this. Of those 21, 15 actually made it to the community because they followed all of the guidelines that they needed to follow. A few were a little short in some areas. Councilmember Blanchard and Councilmember Stedman and I quite exhaustively poured through all of the proposals, many discussions, many meetings, and we whittled it down to five that we had for a small interview with the three of us over the past couple of weeks. Of those five, we are recommending three to the City Council as a whole, and the City Council will then hold a full council interview of those three candidates, and that is going to happen March 16th. I know, it's in the morning. It's to begin around 9:00, at least is the initial plan. At this public meeting, the Council will have the opportunity to interview, question the finalists. The finalists will be able to give some, a brief presentation to the Council. But it's very important that the Council, the full Council, have an opportunity to talk to each of these firms, the subcommittee. And I want to really thank Councilmember Blanchard and Councilmember Stedman for the amount of time and effort that they put into this. Their expertise and the way that they've looked at this was extremely beneficial, and it will definitely benefit the residents of Berkeley. So, I want to make sure that I thank them for all of their work. You know, we've got a chance to speak with all of these firms or these individuals. The rest of the City Council does not. The City Council directly hires the City Manager and the City Attorney, those two positions. So, it's very important, the subcommittee believed, for councils to have at least a few applicants, a few people that they could ask questions, kind of get a feel for, and that is what's going to happen on March 16th. The three finalists that are going to be interviewed on that day are Dale Schneider, Hafali, Sterin, Hallahan, and Christ is one of the firms, and the third firm is Jamarko, Mullins, and Horton. So, those are the three firms or individuals that we will be interviewing as a council on March 16th. After that, the council will make their decision, either at the next council meeting or the meeting after that, so everybody is aware of the process and where we are. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Platt Onson?
Just very briefly, the home show will include the presence of the Environmental Advisory Committee and the Tree Board. So, if you're interested in information on how to make your home more energy-efficient or how to utilize shade trees to cool your house in the summer, things like that, we have some great organizations and volunteers in the city who will be available to speak to that. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that one of my goals is to see new faces as volunteers and people stepping up. We saw Mr. Nicolai today during Citizens Comment, Mr. Canty, Ms. Buckler, and it's great to see new faces and people coming forth, because it really is a great opportunity when you're serving the city. And- when you're serving the city and I'm really happy to see that. And Happy St. Patrick's Day to all those that observe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa.
Okay, Council, I'll try to be brief as well. I know that the council has mentioned many programs that are available out there to the public. Again, I'd just like to remind everyone, please go to, visit our website at www.berkleymish.org. You can get all kinds of information regarding many of these events. So, please join us. Of course, the best thing to do would be to subscribe to our website so that we can send you this information via email as well. And the only other thing I'd like to mention, City Council, I've been holding on to this, to this award, something that I'm really proud of, and I was hoping to send it to the DDA first, but time is running out of the essence. I've had it for over a week now. The Michigan Concrete Association gave an Award of Excellence to the City of Berkeley for the 12-mile in Coolidge intersection improvement that we made. And so, it's been a while and we just received it a few weeks ago. And so, everybody can see it, I will be presenting this to the Downtown Development Authority. I'm really proud of this. Our engineers submitted this on our behalf and quite pleased to say that they did recognize us for the work that we've done along 12-mile in Coolidge. Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Just one question. When you say people can subscribe to the website, you don't mean that it costs them money?
Oh, no. It's just simply, just sign in, send us your email and let us know and be happy to include you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Well, I have just a couple of quick comments, again, thanking John Nicolai for all his work on the Mayor's Cup and his comments at the beginning of the council meeting tonight indicating the athletic successes of so many of our teams in the city. I would like to add to that that our schools also have academic successes and very important ones reported recently through the MEEP scores. And so, we'd like to congratulate the Berkeley School District and the students and teachers and administrators for all they do to bring about those kinds of positive and important results. So, we blend academic and athletic success, which is a very nice thing. Councilmember Baker reminded us that we need to think gratitude, think deep gratitude. Thoughts like gratitude and generosity and forgiveness are all important thoughts and central to the notion of mental, good mental health. And Councilmember Stedman read a resolution regarding the importance of mental health and it would be valuable if all of us would practice more and more those kind of wholesome notions because they contribute to our well-being and our mental stability and obviously for our enjoyment of life, ultimately for happiness. And finally, I should say, St. Patrick's Day comes up in the middle of the month. And now, having said that, we need to move on to our work session. Is there a motion to enter our work session?
Enter a work session.
Motion.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Baker, support by Councilmember Platten. Ms. Pouchier, please read item number one on the work session, number eight on the work session.
Matter of discussing proposed building modifications to the ice arena.
Mr. Sessa.
You know, Council, usually with regards to this matter, when we're looking at contracts with the City of Berkeley, at the ice arena, it does not require that I come before the City Council. I simply, we already have agreements that are already all set. I work very closely with the city attorney to make sure that those agreements are done in accordance to the direction of the city council. But in this instance, though, we are seeing something a little different coming before us. And I know that our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Tom Caldwell, is doing his utmost best to bringing some new things to the ice arena. I know that one of the things that he keeps reminding me over and over again is that nothing's going to change if we continue to do the same thing over and over again. So, we're always looking for some new ways to address the ice arena. You know, Council, you also are aware that in past years, the ice arena has had some difficulties with regards to its costs. We did look at that very briefly, but again, we do believe in the ice arena and we want to take some steps that we believe will help the ice arena. So, with that, having said that, let me tell you that before I ask our director, Mr. Tom Caldwell, to come up and speak to the City Council about these proposals that are up here, again, let me remind you that ordinarily, whenever someone comes to lease the arena, it's not something that I bring before the City Council. But very recently, we've received some new proposals that are asking some major modifications to the arena. And because they are major, I would like to first ask the City Council for their input. Please know that I did have an informal meeting with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee as well. I asked them to join us and I went over the proposals, which I'll ask Mr. Tom Caldwell to go over them with the City Council now. And they were very supportive of this request. Again, I know that we're asking the City Council to provide us with some input, but again, because there are some concerns with regards to the facility, I would appreciate some direction from the City Council on this matter. And of course, I will be changing, if the council agrees with this, I will be making some major changes to the facility as well. So, with that, Mr. Caldwell, can you please join us and explain to the City Council very briefly what these proposals are? Now, Council, I know that I've given you a copy in this package exactly what the proposals are. So, I know Mr. Caldwell won't go into great detail unless you ask him to, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I did meet, both myself and Mr. Caldwell did meet with these individuals and we discussed their proposals. Again, I think that the two individuals that we're recommending, I believe they have a great love for this type of program and we fully support their idea. But nothing comes without risk. So, with that, Mr. Caldwell, can you please explain what these proposals are? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Before you, there are a few proposals and we're asking you to change the name of the game a little bit. You know, Jane and I have certainly had conversations recently about, you know, we really need to change the way we do business at the ice arena. If you can remember, a few years back, we wrote a three-year plan, or I wrote a three-year plan, and, you know, years one and two, we met. You know, year three, really tried to change things around a little bit with the thought that if we can get, you know, passionate Berkeley people involved with the ice arena, that's only going to benefit, only going to benefit the city, benefit the ice arenas. You know, Mr. Nicolai so passionately spoke of earlier, we get people like John involved in what we do, you know, it's all for the better. And that's really what I was looking for in that third year, but we kind of put all our eggs in one basket and it didn't work out. You know, this year to start the season off, you know, we had some compressor issues. And that's really something that, you know, we do our best with preventive maintenance in the summer and hopefully those things don't happen. Really what we're trying to do with these proposals is diversify the way that revenues come in. Right now, you know, for the, you know, for the past and leading up to this year, most of the revenues that come in, come in from the main ice surface. So, if something happens, we lose eight days of ice like we did this year, I mean, it affects us. But if we can make some change and we can bring revenues in from alternate sources, outside of the two leases that you see before you now, you'll see two more, one of which will include our concession stand and one of them will include space for a pro shop. Now, again, these are, you know, people with ties to the City of Berkeley that have a sound, that have a sound plan. So, with the studio space, that's the bigger room that currently we're utilizing for a variety of different reasons. The proposal would have a hockey group that includes Berkeley's varsity hockey coach involved as well as Berkeley Dad's Club would lease the space for a 12-month period. And that would be the proposal that we would recommend. And then there was also two proposals, and this is what Madam City Manager was talking about when she said, "Major change to the building." We would take the game room, which gets little use at this point, little revenue comes in for that space and that would be turned into a locker room. Now, the plans that we've seen so far would really turn that room into a nice space and a great addition to the arena. And the Berkeley Bruins is, their, the team is currently called the Great Lakes Lightning and they're skating out of another ice arena. They would like to move to our ice arena, call themselves the Berkeley Bruins. It's a junior team and that would be the proposal that we would recommend. And again, you know, I think these types of moves are important for us. Now, you know, I've heard the word risk and, you know, you need to know that there is some risk involved with these types of changes, but, you know, unless you're, you know, willing to make, you know, a little bit of risk, you know, the reward really can be quite a bit greater and I think that that's the way to go.
Any questions or, Councilmember Platten?
I've actually, I'm going to start with a comment and then there's like a lot of things swirling, so it might come out as a mess. I've commented on this before, usually in budget work sessions, so the public will actually get the benefit of this, but I've always been impressed by your ability to come up with new ideas and different ways of doing things. So, I appreciate you coming before us with another new idea on how we can improve and change to solve the problems we have. So, thanks for that. I guess my question's really, I'm going to back up in my brain, start with the idea of, how does this, can you talk a little bit about where our income is coming from, where our obligations are coming from, and then what the shift is and what the risk is with that shift? Does that make sense?
Sure, sure. Well, right now, our main sources of revenue are coming from the hockey teams that pay to use our facility and mainly, you know, we've got a number of teams that have really done great things for the City of Berkeley, but they come in, they rent the ice and they leave and the few hours that they're in the building, I mean, that's the relationship really. But the majority of our revenue comes from that, sales of the main ice rink. And again, you know, we lost eight days this year when the compressors went down. You know, that's quite a bit of money. I'm sure you've seen the reports that I put together telling you exactly what that lost revenue meant. So, by diversifying the way that the revenue has come in, by leasing some of these spaces out, the concession stand, for instance, if that gets approved, not only will that be an additional source of revenue, right now, we do receive revenue for our concession stand, but we also pay part-time employees, we buy all the things that we sell. And so, we'll be cutting some of our expenses, but we'll also be, you know, gaining revenue. The pro shop, right now, we get, you know, a small lease. It's a room that the Berkeley High School team uses. But right now, all the groups that use our space, they have to go elsewhere to get their skate sharpened or buy their sticks or their tape or whatever. So, not only would it be getting revenue for that space, but it'd be a great service for the people that utilize our building. You know, the studio space itself, I think that, you know, in the eight years since we took the ice out of that area, this has been the best year revenue-wise, you know, but I think looking further in how we can do business and want to do business, you know, there's a great plan in place to turn that room into a wonderful hockey and athletic training facility. You know, now, there will be some hockey-specific things, but, you know, there's different ways that athletes can train nowadays where, you know, it can be a multi-sport venue. And so, really, not only are we diversifying how we bring our revenue in, but we're really diversifying the clientele that we can bring in. I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah. So, I had a follow-up to that. So, you mentioned a little bit some of the existing programs that are in place. What impact does this have on any of our existing recreational programs or employees or things like that?
Well, at this point, it wouldn't affect any of our employees and there would be an effect on some of our programs. I'm, you know, so proud of what we've done with Winterfest and, you know, really, we're going to have to be creative on how we plan Winterfest for 2014. You know, without the studio space, we lose some of the demonstration area that we have. We had a bounce house, you know, some of those things that we did in there, you know, we're going to have to move those elsewhere, you know. But then, you know, change is a good thing. You know, we're going to have a, you know, a state-of-the-art training facility in there. Let's get those guys involved in Winterfest. Let's teach people, you know, how they can be more active and things that they can do to be more healthy. Without the game room, we're going to have to rethink, you know, our chili-soup cook-off, which has been very popular. You know, the staff and I have already been talking about different ideas and, you know, I've been telling them, hey, you know, we're going to have to think of a few things. Scott, our recreation programmer, has really done a nice job looking at the space we have available and programming it. You know, we've had a number of programs, aerobics programs, yoga, that have used the game room right after school. We've had a kids' yoga program that's been great. We had a soccer program that used the studio space. All right, so if those go away, then that's going to task us to be more creative in how we offer what we offer. You know, there is some good space at the community center and we're just going to need to be diligent in not only how, well, what we offer, but how we go about, I don't know, evaluating and forecasting the community, you know, the things that are of interest and, you know, what we should run. I mean, so there, I mean, so without question, some of that stuff definitely gets affected.
I swear, I think I only have one more question.
Okay.
What does this do to our access to the space? So, for instance, the hockey training area, if they aren't using it at a particular time, is that something we can use for our programming or does the lease not allow us access to that?
Well, that's one of, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that was it.
I spoke with our city attorney about that fact and how we can write that in there that if the space is available, you know, we want to be able to have access to it. And, you know, the lease agreement itself is still a work in progress. It has not been finalized or signed, but that's something that we have thought about. We're trying to find a way to work that in so that if we do need it, you know, we can work with that group to be able to use the space.
Thanks. Sorry for dominating.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Tobrak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whenever we've talked about the ice rink and what's gone on in the ice rink and the various teams that have been in the ice rink, you know, over the last, at least since I've been a council, so roughly six years, it's always been a conversation of, are we going to keep it open? What if we have to transfer money in? Well, we have to transfer money in this year. You know, these people didn't pay their bills and it makes us look bad and the arena's not in great shape. And four years ago, I believe it was, we were voting up here whether it was going to be shut down or not. It was a, we had a ton of folks in the audience giving their comments and we decided that we were going to keep it open and we had to look at whether we're going to turn it over to a management company or whether we're going to have, you know, one of our neighboring cities come in and manage it or whether we're going to give you a shot with it, Tom. And certainly, we made the right decision in going with you and you're showing why, you know, with these numbers and these proposals. But I want to talk a little bit more about some of the stuff that you mentioned because I think it is critical. You know, the bottom line, you got to look at this as a business. You know, the bottom line, you gotta look at this as a business, and the ice arena's an enterprise fund as well, okay? That means it supports itself. We don't wanna be transferring money in, the arena has to be able to support itself through the services that it offers and the people that use those services. So with that in mind, a diversified plan such as this obviously guards us against what happened to us in past years, where, you know, one of our agreements, for whatever reason, fell through, and we didn't get that money we had to transfer in. And that, again, leads to the conversation, "Okay, we're transferring in forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars. Is it worth it to keep this building open?" And then we get to a situation like this, where we get some people, aside from Tom and, and the hard work and all the time and hours and, and that he puts into the arena, get people that are invested in the city of Berkeley. Jeff Fleming, for example, our varsity coach, varsity high school coach, he's a resident of the city, very invested in the city. He coaches a team in the city that he likes to, to be a good team, and to have a good team, you've gotta have a good program of where the kids play hockey as they're young, and they develop, so that by the time they get to high school, he knows he's gonna have the players that he wants to compete. And, and when you get a guy like Fleming, who's been involved in hockey a long time, and he has connections to other people, and he, and he tells them how great that the city is, and, you know, the arena, does it need some work? Yeah, it needs work. And is that one of the risks in this? It certainly is. But we can't sit here and say, "Ah, we're not gonna do anything, and the roof is leaking a little bit, it might not last. This doesn't look good. This needs to be painted." If we just sit there and do that, nothing moves on. Jeff is not concerned with that. In fact, he wants to help out. He wants to, you know, get, get a citizens group together, a lot like the, the Friends of the Parks and Recreation, or the Dad's Club, to help do some minor upkeep in the arena, at no cost to the city, mind you. And he has these connections. And the studio ice, you know, that, that Tom mentioned, I think, over the past, not, not counting this year, whatever, eight years since it's been down, seven years, we made, what, like six, seven thousand dollars total on that space?
Uh, fourteen-three over the last eight years.
Fourteen-three over eight years, and with this contract now, we will be a few thousand short of that in one year, with just the studio ice, just the small ice. And, you know, with next-level development, we haven't even mentioned the names of the people, the Berkeley Bruins, the junior team you mentioned, uh, next-level player development, um, they're one of the ones that wanna come in and use the studio space as a, a training facility, but also working with the Berkeley Dad's Club as well. Don't, don't forget, the Dad's Club are involved in this as well, and we all know, you know, not, not just time, but the finances that the Dad's Club has put in to the city in terms of fields and everything else, and they're involved in this program as well. So you've got Mr. Fleming, working with the Dad's Club, bringing in some contacts, next-level development, you've got the Berkeley Bruins, uh, Flum, Mr. Fleming wants to get the Berkeley Hockey Association back up and running, um, under his leadership, uh, with his people in there. Uh, Tom mentioned Marinelli's possibly handling the concessions, B and R handling a pro shop. So you've got all of these new assets, potential assets, assuming this goes through, coming into the city, who wanna be invested in our little ice arena that people wanna shut down all the time. And it's because of leadership from Tom, and it's because of dedicated citizens and residents, like Mr. Fleming and like Mr. Nicolai there, that don't, and they wanna keep fighting, and they see what that little arena can do, even though it's only one sheet of ice, and all of its warts. And now we get a junior team that wants to come in and invest in our arena, and build their locker room there, their home, and call themselves the Berkeley Bruins. Now, no longer the Great Lakes, whatever, Lightning. They're gonna be, the Berkeley Bruins, they've got a logo and everything. If we had all this information four years ago, it'd be a completely different story, but we didn't. But people kept working, they didn't give up, and we're here now. That's not to say that the rink, the roof isn't gonna go at some point, we might have to do some things.
Do some things.
We will, we know that. But at least now, it's getting utilized, we've diversified our economy, the financial base of the arena, certainly with all these contracts, uh, it, it would support itself. We are not anticipating, you know, at least right now with all of this in place, transfer in, not to mention spring ice, uh, that we're gonna have for the first time, and, do you know how long it was last time? Have we ever had spring ice here?
Not since I've been here.
Hey, we're gonna have spring ice, which any viable hockey team needs to have, because that's where you do a lot of recruiting. We're gonna have that for the first time this year as well, and that's making money that we hadn't made in the past. And even Mr. Sabuda thought that was a good deal. If he likes the money, it's a good thing. Maybe it's something that we should push forward through. One last thing that I wanna talk about, you, you mentioned your business and, and Winterfest and having to relocate some things. That's true, but I have complete faith that you and the department will figure out ways so that we don't lose the things we like at, at Winterfest, the things that our residents love at Winterfest. But at the same time, building into the ice arena, growing these, uh, these additional, um, you know, tenants, I guess, as it is here, I think it's certainly worth our, you know, maybe thinking a little bit more critically about how we provide some of those services in lieu of not having these spaces, uh, and I have complete confidence that you and the department will handle that. So if you haven't figured it out yet, I'm very supportive of this. Um, I know this is a work session, we're not voting on anything, and the city manager doesn't really need us to, but she wants, you know, our input here. Uh, it is certainly something that I am very supportive of. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for another interesting dialogue here tonight. As, as noted, this is a work session, it's our opportunity to, to kind of kick around a few ideas here, and just kinda get a read on where, where our thoughts are, and, and provide some guidance going forward. So I appreciate that opportunity to, to look at these here, and, and, well, I don't wanna sound like a broken record to repeat the same kinds of themes, but as I was thinking about my comments here, I'll just lightly touch on the same things, and it begins with gratitude, again, for the creativity that Tom, you, and the team, uh, the, the residents, the businesses have continued to show in providing fresh, exciting ways to keep the arena relevant and vibrant, um, as part of our community. Year after year, you get ideas and thoughts, and most of them work, occasional setbacks, and, and that's all part of learning and growing, and I wanna commend you and the team again for, for that work and creativity. As to the, um, the existing programming that's in place, again, you mentioned some very successful recent additions to our, to our portfolio of, of uses of the facility, and what a nice problem to have, right? What a nice problem to, to, to finally say, "Oh, my gosh, what would we do about this successful program if we wanted to move forward with a more, you know, regular, consistent use of the facility?" What a nice problem to have, and so I congratulate that, and I have every confidence as to the comments earlier, that, that we can and will find creative ways to ensure that those programming items continue, and perhaps will even be better because of the opportunities afforded to them based on this kind of work. So I, I think that's fantastic. Um, I did carefully review the, the ideas and the proposals that were provided to us here. Um, again, I love the concepts, the Bruins, I love the fact that they're willing to invest in our, um, community. Uh, as is noted, it's, uh, they would bring in groups from around the state to help see Berkeley for the first time, Traverse City, Holland, Allen Park, Livonia, Grand Rapids, all those teams would come to, to Berkeley. Not only would they play here, their, their, uh, those that travel with them would get something to eat here, they'd kinda see what Berkeley has to offer, they might do a little bit of shopping, so anything that brings additional folks to, to not only enjoy their primary purpose for being here, which is to get beat by the Bruins, uh, but then also to, uh, to, you know, get some food or some shopping while they're here, I think that's, uh, that's great. I love attracting others to our, our region. Uh, the next level, um, um, player development, um, proposal for the studio, I think, makes a real good use of the, of that room. It's a, um, twelve-month kind of operation, certainly, can, can be well-used there, and the, the concession stands and the, the pro shop, again, I think are great ideas to, to reinvigorate that, that use of the facility. So, again, I know that today we're talking concepts, uh, I think the, the materials here do more than just provide a concept, they actually give us a line of sight into how this could actually be successful. Uh, so I'm very confident in, in, uh, in the, where we're at today with this. My only question at this point is just in terms of, of timing, so, right, if and when we were able to, to move forward with the next round of dialogue in this, in terms of the detailed plans, the, the timing, the cost estimates, um, those kinds of things, and something for us, that's on my mind, is, is when might we be able to, to have that deeper dialogue about, um, understanding, you know, what will it take to, dot, dot, dot? You know, what will it take to put the locker room in place? What will it take to get the, um, contracts in, in order, to ensure that they're properly reviewed and that, uh, the revenues are, are appropriate? So that's my only question, but to, to close again with, with thanks and, and support for the direction of this work, this is, this is great, I love the, everything we can do to keep this place vibrant, so.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa.
You know, Council, I know that both myself and Mr. Caldwell are, are gonna be working very closely with the city attorney to make sure that, that these concerns are addressed. We are already looking at some numbers, and here I'm working with our finance director to make sure that, that they're properly being reviewed, and that we have all the, or as best as we can to protect the city as much as we can, 'cause this is really a, a little bit of a different venue than we've ever done before. Having someone come into our building and build something within, um, they would be in control of, of whatever it is that they were gonna be building. Of course, we would give them permission, uh, but we need to make sure in, in that the city attorney writes the proper language in the contract that, um, that it allows us for, for input and, uh, and, and review and, and approval, in some cases, depending on what it is, because one of the things that concerns me is, you know, I, I recognize that while someone else is gonna be doing the investment here, I don't want them to be just utilizing cheap materials, or things like that, or, or, you know, inferior workmanship. I, I don't want that, uh, and so we have to be, you know, mindful of that, and so this is something that, that, again, we've never done before, and, uh, again, I will look with the guidance from the city attorney to make sure that we have all the proper, uh, proper channels. This is still a work in progress, but I did not wish to pursue this matter any further unless I received at least a go-ahead from the city council. And depending on the changes that we make to this, to these agreements, I may bring them back to the city council for, for your consideration, because, again, um, I do not have carte blanche to just sign anything, uh, no matter what anybody says. There are checks and balances that I, that I must adhere to, and in this instance, uh, some of these items are going above and beyond the direction that the city council has given me. So I may come back to the council on these. Now, in terms of deadlines, that's very key. They'd like for us to do this real quickly, and then they're moving fast because, um, in their, uh, I, I know they'd like to get this done before, um, the new season comes up. So we still have to meet with them again, we need some information that the, that the finance director would like to see, and, um, and then proceed with that. So, um, again, we'll, we'll move as quickly as we can, and, and do what I can to at least give them the go-ahead, and then, and then also in conjunction, meet with the city attorney to make sure we have the proper language in there. So it's, it's gonna be a tough venture, something that, that I know that we can do. I, I, I'm, I'm positive that we should be able to write a, a strong contract, and, uh, end up looking at the city attorney here, but, um, but again, this is a new venture, and it is, it is a little risky, but, um, but I think that it's one that, as I said earlier, if we continue to do business as is, nothing's gonna change.
Good. Councilmember Baker had a follow-up?
Yeah, just mostly, uh, I'd like to thank you for those additional comments. Those were some of the things that we're certainly gonna look forward to in subsequent dialogue, not only in terms of the details and the dollars and the specifics in terms of the timing, but also the, uh, the safety, so from the fire marshal perspective, obviously, we know that there's some, some current things that we're working through from that perspective, and, and in addition to ensuring the quality of workmanship of the, of the investments in the facility, we'd wanna ensure that it meets our, our, all of our safety standards as well, so I'm, I'm glad that that's part of the plan, as you described it, 'cause...
I'm very pleased, Your Honor, to let you know that, you know, working closely with all our departments, and I'm putting everybody in, um, you know, in tune with this, our city planner, uh, planning department will also be reviewing the, the, uh, the, uh, the plans and all that kinda stuff, so, yeah, we, uh, we're, I'm really lucky, we have great staff, and we'll do our best to, to, to bring together a, a good quality project.
Very good. Councilmember Kadekla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I would say that Mayor Protem said a lot of the things that I wanted to say, but I recall the days of sitting back on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and the ice arena was always the thorn in our side, or the concern that we had, and "If you build it, they will come," the old cliche, and I think that we're showing that when we're doing things, the people are coming. The other night, I was at the Mayor Cup's committee meeting, and looking through the glass at the studio ice, it was packed, activity all over the place. So I wanna thank administration, Mr. Vice-Sesse, Mr. Sabuda, Mr. Schneider, and I, I wanna thank everyone, the citizens, residents, everyone that's come together, that has put this effort forth to a new level, as far as I'm concerned, and, um, I am definitely supporting this idea.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Blanchard.
A couple of things. Uh, one is, uh, we talk a lot about investment, is there any cost to the city to do this?
There might be, Your Honor, there may be. It depends on the plan itself, and we're still looking at it. So, uh, for example, uh, the, the water issues, you know, they're, they're looking at showers and, uh, and, and bathroom facilities. There may be, we don't know, we have to, the first thing we have to do is get the plan, so that our building department can take a look at it, and then our, our, our builder, our inspectors can check to see to make sure that we have the proper capacity. If not, what are some of the things that we may have to do, uh, to, to be able to do this? But again, right now, Your Honor, we, we, we're hoping that if there is a cost, that it will be small, but we're still looking at it.
And what about liabilities? In the case of this year, we lost eight days of ice, and we've got signed contracts with these club teams, they have to play. What happens if our, and we know that our equipment is not the best in the world, in fact, we gotta look at doing some maintenance out there.
We are doing it.
What happens if we have a compressor failure again, and we lose a, a week of ice? What's our liability, and how is that gonna be handled, or maybe that's not yet addressed 'cause we haven't done the contract?
Well, unfortunately, in our instance, with our contracts, if it's, if it's down, it's down, and, and they lose the time to, to train, and that's unfortunately the risk that, uh, when they, when people sign up with us, as with any, uh, in any ice arena, unfortunately, that's the situation. We do our best to maintain the ice arena, I know that, uh, we're taking some steps to, to address some of the concerns that we, we, we know, the compressor being one of them, um, and there's a couple of equipment needs and things of that nature, so we're, we're looking into it, Your Honor, we're doing our best to be prepared, but here again, this is something we have no control, and, uh, unfortunately.
But we're not liable if the ice goes down.
No.
We're not liable for the, the tenants, um, so that was, that would be a big problem. There you'd be, your big issue, uh, but then again, we don't get the income when the ice is down, too, so.
All in all, I think it's a, it's a great project, I think it's something that we need to look at, but there's just a couple of concerns, and thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
I say go ahead with it, too. Thank you.
Well, then it falls to me to basically sum up the consensus of the council, which is affirmative, positive, and tinge with a level of excitement that creative ideas have been brought to the table, imaginative strategies to save that ice arena, make it a productive place for our community, and not cost us too much money in the process.
We'll do our best.
The player, I know all the players involved in, in this, uh, project, from Coach Jeff Fleming and, uh, Coach Dave Sapon on the, on the high school side, down to, to John here with us tonight, and Mike Dooley, and all of these people who have done so much over the years for hockey in our community, and who do so much in a ton of other ways for other aspects of our community life as well. These are reliable, good and decent people who, um, are making a big difference in our community, and I'm just happy that the city can cooperate with them and work with them to make the ice arena really an effective, um, set of programs. And the imaginative ways you have of figuring out how we keep the good things we have while crafting, uh, a contract with these groups that, you know, protects all of us, and there's where our city attorney comes in to make sure that, that occurs. So I'm excited by this, um, it reflects a sense of vision, and, uh, as proverbs remind us, where there is no vision, the people perish. So that vision is important, I congratulate all our staff, from Tom Caldwell across the board, uh, for the work of bringing this before the council, and, uh, hopefully bringing it to fruition pretty quickly, because there's the time involved here, too. We can't delay unnecessarily here. We've gotta work up this, these contracts and make this happen, uh, in a, in a timely way. So the direction to administration from the council is to proceed with this.
Your Honor, thank you.
Okay? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And now we move on to the second item on the work session. Uh, Ms. Blanchard, would you please read that one? B.
Matter of discussing bicycle parking ordinance.
Mr. Sessa.
Well, Council, back in, uh, 2009, the Planning Commission recommended a bicycle park, parking ordinance to the city...
park, parking ordinance to the city council. Unfortunately, as, as indicated in the report by Ms. Vanson, that proposal, that proposed ordinance, uh, was not approved. Since then, the Planning Commission has, uh, has developed a new, uh, bicycle, uh, parking ordinance for your consideration. They did have, they did hold a public hearing back in February, and they are now recommending it to the city council for adoption. Please know that the city attorney has reviewed this ordinance as well. Uh, but now, so that to, I've asked our city, our city planner, Ms. Vanson, to explain to you exactly what is some of the main, um, issues that are being addressed in this proposed ordinance. And all we're looking for you this evening, Your Honor, is to ask the city council to, uh, to provide us some input and some, uh, direction, uh, with regards to the ordinance that, that is being proposed by the Planning Commission. If you, if, uh, if you feel that this is sufficient, then, uh, then again, we'll move forward and, and bring it to the city council for a first reading. But with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Vanson, so that she can explain the specifics, uh, on this item. And, and also, please know, uh, city council, that, uh, Mr. Dave Barnett, the chair of the Planning Commission, is also here with us, so I'm sure Ms. Vanson may look to him for, uh, for some assistance as well. With that, Ms. Vanson. Thank you.
Um, yeah. In 2009, the Planning Commission recommended a bicycle parking ordinance to city council. That ordinance did not pass. Since that time, uh, state law has changed relative to complete streets legislation. The city council passed a resolution advising the Planning Commission to adopt a multimodal transportation plan. The Planning Commission did that, and one of the to-do lists, uh, on the to-do list was to adopt a bicycle parking ordinance. Uh, we require parking for cars, and we require sidewalks for pedestrians. So, it's not a large leap to say that we need to provide some means of putting your bike someplace when you're not using it. Uh, the intent of this, it, it is different than the one that was proposed in 2009. Uh, the thing that is similar is the 2009 one and this one, uh, would require the bike rack only when a major permitted item or a new development is being completed. It would not just be because your business licenses do, or your rental licenses do. It would be if you're, uh, uh, resurfacing the parking lot, which is something that requires a permit, or if it's a new development going in, and a brand-new parking lot's being put in. Uh, the thing that is different from the ordinance from 2009, the 2009 ordinance, which we did look at various ordinances, uh, based its parking requirement similar to how we have car parking. The car parking ordinance is based upon uses and size of buildings. And so, depending upon what kind of business you have and how large the space is, that dictates how many parking spaces you need. And the previous ordinance was like that with regard to bicycle parking. This one, it's a set fee, or a set fee, excuse me, a set amount of bike parking, no matter what the building, the size of the building, or how large it is, how small it is, and what it happens to be used as currently. Because there, I'm, my understanding, I was not at the second reading back in 2009, but there had been some discussion of certain businesses not needing, um, bicycle parking because of the nature of what they are. But as the Planning Commission discussed it, you know, businesses do change. And, uh, businesses that used to be coffee shops are now hair salons, and businesses that used to be drugstores are now, uh, fitness centers. So, things do change. And so, the intent with this ordinance is that whenever a business is putting in a parking lot or resurfacing an existing one, which are all things that require a permit, that a bike rack that can hold two bikes would be required. If a business just does not feel like they can squeeze in an area six feet by, about two and a half feet, um, six by four would be the parking space area, but actually what, the bike area would be two and a half by six. If we have an instance where a business just can't fit that in, then the city may require that they pay a fee, which, um, based upon the conversations with our DPW director, would be about $300. And the city will install a bike rack within the same block as that business. So, it would still be used to service that business, but it would not be on, um, private property. It would be on public property. The intent with that is that we're not just taking the money and putting bike racks someplace that's not going to service that business. Uh, but if a business truly cannot find an area to squeeze it in, we still want to, um, excuse me, have the, uh, the bike parking adjacent to the business. Uh, this ordinance does, um, explain which types of bike racks are, um, considered appropriate. It does go through a checklist. If a business, for whatever reason, wanted to do something very creative, there is that ability to do that. We just have a, a checklist of things that have to be, um, met in order for it to be safe. And as far as the review of the bike rack, it would be, depending upon whether it was, uh, new building, new parking lot, that goes to the Planning Commission versus a resurfacing, it goes through the building permit process. So, there's no additional reviews with this proposal. Uh, there is a bit of a carrot with all of this, and the carrot would be that if you decide to put in two U-shaped bike racks, and this would be available to not only new developments, but existing businesses, you can get a credit of two car parking spaces, not four. You have to have four bike parking spaces, and you get to count two cars against that. So, or, so that would be, um, in some of our tighter situations, that, that can, I see, we have businesses that they were built in 1930, and the space is what it is. And if they want to add, I use the, the, um, example, uh, four years ago, and I still think it rings true. Ellie's, um, grill wanted to add on a refrigerator space at the back. It wasn't going to change the seating. It wasn't going to change anything. It was just going to make his business more up-to-date. And because of the way our parking requirements are, it's based upon the square footage. And he needed to get a variance, because there was no way to do fuzzy math and make him not need a variance. If he had been able to put a bike rack out in front of his business, we would have a bike rack instead of me just having a file for the ZPA case. I think I'm done.
Are there, are there questions, discussion of this, uh, item? Let, let me ask you a question about this $300. Uh, let's suppose we have three businesses in a row, and each one puts in a bike rack. And the fourth business now, uh, is challenged with putting in a bike rack.
You mean on the city sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, mightn't it be possible that there are enough bike racks right in that spot?
And that's why the ordinance says, ordinance says may require.
Uh, thank you.
Because we wouldn't want to break our own law.
That's very important. Very good. Very wise, Amy. Thank you.
I have to credit the city, credit the city attorney with that. He is the one that said nay. That was his...
Councilmember Platt Onson.
Um, you guys have done a lot of work on this, so thanks. So, I have, uh, very few, um, comments. Um, obviously, I'm thrilled to be looking at a bicycle parking ordinance, because I'll finally be able to put my bike somewhere. Um, and I really am encouraged by, um, separating it from the type of business, et cetera, because, you know, who are we to decide where people should or shouldn't ride a bike? Um, so, I, I like some of the, the things that are happening here. Um, the question I have is section 138 dash 267, the requirements. B is location. Bicycle parking shall be visible from the main entrance of the structure or facility. I, I'm trying to run through my head of all the different scenarios where things could happen. I'm looking at something like maybe Hiller's, where their main entrance, you could argue, is their front door, um, which then, in order for it to be visible, it would need to be in the public right-of-way. Um, there, they do have an entrance where their parking lot is. You could argue that maybe is their main entrance. How does that play out with the terminology that, that we've used?
I, I think the intent of this, it, it's similar to, say, barrier-free parking, where it needs to be something that's visible and accessible. So, it, you can't put it all the way around the corner and at the back, where nobody's going to know it's there. So, with the case of Hiller's, they really do have two front doors. And so, when and if they decided to resurface or something like that, I think we would let them choose where they wanted to do it. Do they want to have us put it on the sidewalk, or do they want to put one where the car parking is? And part of that's municipally owned, and part of it's privately owned, that particular lot that looks like all one lot, but it's not, when you look at the property, um, parcel ID numbers. Um, so I think we would defer to the business owner on what it, it, the intent is, is just to not squirrel it around the back, where nobody knows where it's at.
Okay. That, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable that the language we had, and that you're comfortable that the language we have, um, sort of, we have a lot of places where businesses have sort of a back-front door and a front-front door, if you will.
That's true.
So, I just wanted to make sure that we were sort of accommodating that, for that. It's obviously a bigger deal in our downtown, where many of them may opt to be just including it on the public right-of-way or something, anyway. But I would just want to make sure, um, that that was accounted for. And I didn't know, for barrier-free parking, do they talk about distance from an entrance in any way, shape, or form? Because visible...
Right. With barrier-free...
...could be in a dark back corner by a dumpster, and it could be technically visible. I didn't know if there was a distance requirement for...
With barrier-free parking, I know just enough to be very dangerous with it. Um, I know there is some, just, there's always some discussion on, uh, the barrier-free, it has to be accessible. It has to have an accessible route. Um, we have had folks in the case of barrier-free parking space that say, well, it's not the closest one, and it, and it doesn't necessarily, it, it needs to be, and this is where I get dangerous. The building official will say, well, and he says it so eloquently, because he knows the rule. Um, in the case of some businesses, because of the way their service walk goes, you end up having to go past a lot of parking spaces because of the way ramping and so forth works. In this case, it needs to be lighted. It can't be something that's in an unsafe spot. Um, and, and I think, you know, there's always, I've, I've been doing this long enough that, that, you know, I think I've got a really great 100%, and then there's always that unintended consequence that comes up, and you go, oh, nuts. Um, so I, I, I think this is a very good shot at it, and is something going to come up that's going to be weird, and I'm going to go, oh, nuts? Um, I may. But I, I think that this is, this is a good start, and, and we can, uh, work with the businesses to find a spot where it's, it's not going to cause a problem, but we're going to end up having an amenity that, right now, we can't require.
And are all, um, parking lot resurfacing, I know new projects go, go before the Planning Commission for a site plan review. In terms of resurfacing a parking lot...
It's just a building permit. It would be an administrative approval.
Okay. So, it would be, okay. But that would be something where you would see the plan anyways, so you would see the...
Yes. So, it's something, nobody knew is coming to the city. Yeah. We didn't, yeah. And, and the other intent was, we didn't want to be burdensome. This is already something that's going to be a big, um, investment for a business owner. And so, the, if they do the installation, a $200 bike rack is not going to be onerous on a local, um, small business.
That was all. Thanks.
Any other, uh, aspects of this to be discussed, Councilmember Baker?
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. And, uh, thank you for, um, for bringing this before us tonight, and, and my gratitude to the, uh, the Planning Commission and others for the work that they did to bring this up before us here tonight as well. Uh, similar comments, I'll try not to, to repeat. I do think it's, uh, it's good that we're moving forward with, uh, with something like this here before us tonight. I also had zoomed in on that same, uh, spot there, as a matter of fact, and I, I picked on the, you know, the, the choice of the definite article "the" versus, uh, you know, the indefinite article, uh, you know, kind of a thing to say, you know, if this is visible and accessible from a main, or from a primary, you know, rather than "the." But I, I'm satisfied with this conversation. I'm not sure if, if we need to go through the, the process of actually amending the text, but I think that, you know, that kind of dialogue was helpful for me to understand the intent of the language as well, in terms of being visible and accessible from a main entrance, or something like that, I think was, I had that kind of question in my mind as well.
I think we can look into that, Ms. Vanson and I, and...
I'm happy with "A." It's okay.
Okay. But either way, I think it was more the idea, whether you want us to bring this back for the first reading. Uh, we can tweak whatever, and we can look into, you know, these fine two, these fine-tuning part of it. Uh, but it was more the idea, whether you want us to bring it back.
Sure, sure. I think, uh, yep, that's right. Given this is a work session, we're not voting on it. We're simply providing comments. And I think that if these little kinds of things could be discussed now, then it might make, you know, if and when we do a first reading, it could be that much more, at least from my perspective. Um, I do appreciate the, um, the, uh, the way in which this would be rolled out. Certainly, it wouldn't be requiring any existing business if they had no other plans for their parking lot. It would not require them to, to have to retrofit this kind of thing. This is only a going forward when, um, certain kinds of projects are underway. So, I think that, um, that balance seems reasonable, uh, to me. I also like the ability for them, as was pointed out in the memo and in your conversation, about, um, getting credits for, uh, car parking by providing sufficient bicycle parking as well. I think that at least having that option there, uh, might provide, uh, opportunities. Uh, the case in point with Ellie's, I think, is a real good example of how, had we had this, uh, tool in our toolbox a couple of years ago, uh, they could have been able to have that additional, um, refrigerant work that they needed to have done, and, uh, and, um, have more bicycle-accessible parking as well. Um, so I am, uh, comfortable moving forward with this. I think this kind of thing is, is very important. As was mentioned in, uh, in your intro, uh, there, with the notion of our, our complete streets, uh, policy that we have, uh, in the general direction to ensure that, um, more of our facilities are accessible to more of our residents and visitors. I think anything we can do to make that friendly, uh, to not only the vehicles, we can, we like cars. Cars are good. We want to continue to bring them here. Uh, mass transit, of its various forms, is also good. Uh, pedestrians, and of course, bicycles fit into that equation. So, I think, uh, I think this is a positive step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard.
Just a quick question. We've got some pictures in here of, of ones that are acceptable, ones that aren't acceptable. Are they going to have to come in with their bike rack when they get approval for it, when, uh, they apply for the permit?
They can do a catalog cut. They could, no, I don't want them bringing in.
Oh, I mean, but they're, we're going to make sure that we get, is there going to be a recommended or standardized Berkeley bike rack?
Not at this time. The U-shaped or the I-shaped one, um, the hoop style would be the easiest ones for them to do. If they want to do something like the toothbrushes or the banana, or the coffee cup, then we would need to see plans for that.
Okay.
Um, similar, like with light fixtures on a building, we require catalog cuts to be submitted, so that we know that they're not going to shine.
Good. Thank you.
The issue there is the safety of children, if they were...
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Very good. Anybody else want to weigh in on this topic? Well, the consensus that I'm hearing from the council is to go forward, uh, with this, um, item. It, um, there's a lot of work going into it already, and, um, we appreciate the amount of effort and focus and detail from the Planning Commission all the way up along. And, um, so the sense is to, uh, go forward and bring it back to the council, in a form that we can take a look at, and from the sense here is probably passed.
Okay. We will do that. Thank you.
See you in a couple of weeks.
In a couple of weeks. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadakal?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Poucher, please call the roll.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kadakal?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Turbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Yes. The March 4th, 2013 meeting of the council is adjourned.
Thank you.